We just need to do the word. And waiting.
Councilmember Dickinson will lead us in prayers as we begin.
Oh Lord, may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer.
Thank you. Clerks, if you would, please call the roll.
Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Lowry.
Here.
Witcher.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Dickinson.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Honeycutt.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Gaunt. Hammer.
Here.
Will present.
Thank you. You should have a copy of the minutes from their August the 13th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Being the case, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Councilmember Sack, Hammer and Sack.
Second.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have with us tonight Ms. Terry Lawson, and she is here from the American Cancer Society and would like to address the council at this time. So if you would, please give your attention to Ms. Lawson.
Thank you. I've never presented to a city council before, so y'all have got me a little bit nervous with your formalities, but I love it. So I always appreciate the opportunity to come and speak about the American Cancer Society and what we're doing in your community and how we support you and how that you can support us. About a week and a half ago, I had the opportunity to meet with your mayor, Doty, and wonderful guy, by the way, and I appreciate the time that he gave me to kind of give him my spiel, and he offered me the opportunity to come and give the same spiel to you all. So my name is Terry Lawson. I am the senior manager for the south central portion of Kentucky, which means that I have four team members who cover about 18 counties. So we have a big job in Kentucky, and our biggest job in Kentucky is making sure that we raise the money that it takes to advance our mission. And our mission is saving lives through research, prevention, education, and programs and services. So I'd like to ask real quick, are any of our city councils members, are you, any of you all a cancer survivor? Cancer survivor, one. But I'll bet if I ask you, do you have a connection to cancer in some way, whether it be family or friends, I would guarantee that almost every single person in this room could raise their hand, because that's how prevalent cancer is in our society. It touches almost every single one of us. So like I said, our mission is saving lives through research. Also, one of our missions is to make sure that people have access to their treatments, because all the research in the world for life-saving treatments doesn't do anyone any good if they can't get to them. Luckily, you all have two cancer treatment centers here that administer those life-saving treatments. But also, we have something called a Hope Lodge, and that is a place that people, cancer patients can go and stay free while they are having treatments in large cities that are far away from them. We have one in Lexington, Kentucky. In 2017, there were seven cancer patients from Barron County, even though you all have two facilities here, there were seven cancer patients from Barron County, Kentucky, that stayed a total of 94 nights at the Hope Lodge in Lexington. When you talk about the expense of a hotel room, even at $100 a night, I don't know about you, but the last time I spent $100 on a hotel room, I was greeted with graffiti on the back of the elevator doors. So even if you said $100 a night for those 94 nights, you're looking at a savings to Barron County patients of almost $10,000. That doesn't count the transportation that we give them from the Hope Lodge to their treatment. If there was nothing raised here from this community, that service, that would still be available to them regardless of how much was raised here. So how has Barron County supported the American Cancer Society in the past? Our signature fundraiser is Relay for Life. Most of you in this room probably know what Relay for Life is. Relay for Life is our signature fundraiser, and it is still the highest fundraising, peer-to-peer fundraiser of any fundraising activity or nonprofit in the world. So it's still very good. We are seeing in some communities that Relay for Life is just not as well-attended as it used to be. We're seeing that we are losing volunteers. The way that people want to volunteer nowadays is different than the way it was 33 years ago when Relay for Life started. We are having a harder time getting those volunteers, and we're getting, having a harder time getting teams to fundraise, because people are busy, people's children are busy, people's lives are different than they were 33 years ago when Relay started. So we're having a harder time in some communities getting the support behind Relay for Life. So we are trying to back off in some of those communities and not have or force a traditional Relay for Life in those communities. Barron County is one of those communities. This year, we did not have a traditional Relay for Life. We did have a Relay for Life Survivor Dinner that TJ Sampson supported with three volunteers, and they sponsored that event. It was hugely attended. I don't know if anyone in this room was there or not, but we had more people at that Survivor Dinner, survivors and caregivers, than we probably have at the entire Relay for Life in the last two years. Very successful. We plan to continue that. We have a couple of teams, relay teams here, that have continued fundraising for us at about $11,000 this year. We did raise a little bit of money with that Survivor Dinner as well. So we are always looking for ways that communities can, we can support them through treatments, life-saving treatments and research, but also so that you all in this community can support us. We're looking for ways for you all to be able to do that in an easier way than through hours of volunteers going to meetings, going to an event. And so we feel like we've come up with a great way for you all to support us this year. This actually isn't the first year we've done this. This is our fourth year. This year, our virtual event is called "Hope Starts at Home." And that virtual event date is September the 20th, and that is across the state. We have communities just like this, whether they have a traditional relay or not, that are celebrating "Hope Starts at Home," because when you think about hope, where does it start? It starts right here with us. So it's a great opportunity for a whole entire community to support us without having to go to a meeting, go to a real event. And the way that they can support us is by making a small donation of $15 towards the virtual event. A way of us thanking you for that donation is giving you a T-shirt. So what we would like for you to do to participate in that virtual event is to wear, make the donation, and where everyone in the community, wear the T-shirt on that day, which again is September the 20th. Very easy way to support us. Like I said, it's a virtual event. We've already gotten a lot of excitement here in Barron County through this. Glasgow High School has already come on board. Their advanced medicine class is going to, which is a great opportunity for this community anyways, but the advanced medicine class is going to take this on as a project in the high school, the middle school as well. Mayor Doty has already given his support. The newspaper is going to support us through this. TJ Sampson is on board. They're going to allow us to put the T-shirts in their gift shop. TJ Sampson has been a huge supporter of the American Cancer Society from day one in this, in this community. So we already have a lot of big players backing us and supporting us in this event. And so the reason that I'm here today is for, to ask your support in this as well. So you're probably asking, and I hope you're asking, is how can we support you? So the way that you can support me is first, or support the American Cancer Society, is first with your circle of influence. You helping us to get the word out there that this is a great opportunity for the community to come together to rally behind not only the American Cancer Society, but the cancer survivors right here in your community that's already received the life-saving treatment that the American Cancer Society has been a part of. So by supporting us, you can first, circle of influence, get the word out there. We all know that the greatest way to get anything out in your community is word of mouth. Secondly, I have a letter that we plan to send out to industry, banks, businesses, churches, schools, that just say what it is that we're doing and asking them to support us by allowing their employees to make the donation, them wear the shirts on that day, because we do know that a lot of companies have dress codes and uniforms, but allowing them to wear that shirt on that day as well. I've been to the chamber, and the chamber, I'm hoping to meet with them on Wednesday to get them on board on helping us push this out. Mayor Doty has also agreed to sign a proclamation. I'm meeting with Judge Hale on Wednesday to get that going on his side as well. So in the letter that we plan to send out through social media, chamber, through the US mail, I would like to be able to mention that the city council supports this effort in this community, and that's what I'm asking for on your support. Very minimal work on your part of just us talking about what we're doing with your friends and family and getting them on board, getting yourself on board. I already have an order form for a T-shirt from one of your council members already. Luckily for her, I brought a large, so she can have it before she leaves here today. So that's really all that I'm asking you is to support us in this, and through supporting the American Cancer Society through this, you're also supporting the cancer survivors right here in your community.
I'd like to say thank you very much for the work that you and your agency do, and we are in fact behind it. We'll be signing a proclamation that's going to have each of your names in support of that as well on the sixth?
Fifth.
The fifth of September. So again, thank you all for working within your sphere of influence, and thank you, Ms. Lawson, for being here tonight.
Thank you. I'll take the opportunity to show the T-shirt as I'm walking by. Very, very cute.
Thank you. For the next item on our agenda, as you recall, the Glasgow Independent School System met with this group at our last meeting and made a proposal concerning the acquisition of a portion of Goran Park, and as a courtesy to the school board, it's my belief that this council should consider the idea and take any action that it deems appropriate at this time, so that they can have that information prior to their next meeting in September. If you recall, the matter was forwarded to the Parks and Recreation Committee for their consideration and possible recommendations, and essentially, the Parks and Rec Committee met, discussed that, and has determined that it should come back to this body for action, and did so without any specific recommendation. So for that reason, I've asked Eddie Furlong, the director of the Parks and Work, to come and review that meeting with us, and also asked April Russell to come, who is the grant writer for the, for the city, to outline for the council the obstacles and the hurdles, if you will, that will need to be specifically addressed in order, and overcome for us to, for the board's concept to come to fruition. So I'll give them the opportunity to address this council, and then afterwards, I'd like to share my thoughts. So Eddie, if you would, please tell us about that meeting and...
The meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, I thought went very well. We discussed all the talking points, good versus bad, and how it would affect the community. We ended up with a, was it a three to one vote, four to one vote, in favor of continuing the talks with the school board. After that meeting, I got with April, because I was told that there were some restrictions with, with land that has received grant money. So she did some checking into what those restrictions are, and she's going to speak on what those are.
Last week, last meeting, we heard from the school board about the property they were asking for and wanted us to consider. That land is restricted, but also the entire park is restricted. The Land and Water Conservation Fund is funded through the National Park Service, and then it passes through the Department of Local Government, which is then passed on to local communities like ourselves. Goran Park has received Land and Water Conservation Funds at least five times since 1965, and that's as far back as the National Park Service keeps their records. Some of the restrictions which we enter in, the city and the Department of Local Government enter into an agreement with, is the focus that you need for tonight. The acreage must remain, the entire acreage of the park must remain open and accessible to the public at reasonable hours for recreation purposes. Reasonable hours, we lock them up at night. The acreage may never be sold or donated. The acreage may be leased for use as for scheduled practices or games, but must be, remain open during unscheduled times. With all that being said, there is one option that they give you. It is, it's not a good option. They don't look upon it kindly. It's called a conversion. Basically, what happens is you take, the city has to acquire other property at the same fair market value monetarily as what we're giving, donating, selling. And then after they do that, it has to be used for recreational use. It also has to go through your historic preservation review. You have to go through the environmental preservation review. Then it is restricted with the federal funds, just as the other park was.
Your new property.
The new property is restricted, just as the old property was. That process can take at minimum a year, and then you have to send all of your documentation, what you've done to met their conversion, to the National Park Service, and then they get the final say. So if you go through the whole process, and then they say, no, we don't accept this, then you're, you can't do it. So you can't sell, donate, or utilize that property, you know, give that property away, lease it, all that kind of stuff, until the National Park Service, the Department of Interior Secretary, has signed off on that. And like I said, we have, at Goran Park alone, have received at least five of those grants, and that started in 1974. Do you have any questions?
What have those grants been used for since 1974?
Um, let's see. I don't have exactly what some of them were for, but I was finally able to get on to the National Park Service website today, and at Goran Park, in 1993, we got $23,000. In 1980, we had $36,166 for fencing. In 1977, we had $26,436 for tennis courts. Tennis courts again in 1972 for $15,699. And we actually have one open now. We just finished redoing the basketball courts. It doesn't say on, on the spreadsheet, but I have to pull the file from the state before I can tell you.
So just so I understand, forget about what we're talking about with the schools right now, just for the parks itself. So we have to maintain those, or we cannot sell that park?
Unless you go through the conversion process. So the school and the city would have to go through the conversion process, which can take a year to two years, and then there isn't a promise of it happening then.
But I mean, if we move forward to build a new park, we still have to maintain that park because we can't sell it?
Right.
Or we just let it grow up, or whatever? Forget about the school right now.
No, you have to, you have to maintain the parks. That's what it says. It has to be, remain open for recre, outdoor recreational use. When we go into these agreements, we say that we're going to maintain that as a public outdoor recreational use.
So is Eddie, is that in perpetuity? Is that worth getting $75,000? And like I said, forget about what they even talking about the school. I'm just talking about from the city. Is that money worth it to lock us into a park for, I don't know what the chances of going through the national review or whatever it would be, but I mean, is that worth the money you get for having to maintain something if you wanted to build a new park?
I think that's a yes and no answer. Some of the, some of the amounts that I've seen on here are quite large, like Barron River State Park received $1.7 million back in the 60s. You know, if we receive that kind of money, we could do a tremendous upgrade on our park system. But then there are, there have been some smaller grants, you know, $5,000 or whatever it may be, and that seems like a small amount to get you locked in for something.
Hey, well, we already agreed to those amounts and received that money?
Sure. It started back in the early 70s.
No, I'm not questioning that. I'm saying as we go in the future, when somebody wants to give us a park, because it works with $75,000 or $80,000 to, because if we do the master plan and build a new park, what you're telling me is we got to continue to maintain the other one.
Yeah, and that's the point of the National Park Service, is to maintain public outdoor recreational use, so that cities or governments or schools aren't just getting money, and then in five years, say, we don't really want to do that anymore. So you're wasting the National Park Service money in essence.
My point is, was Eddie, if you built a brand-new park across the street from there, are you, is it worth the $80,000 or whatever you just mentioned, to have to keep the old park open? That was my question.
I guess that would be personal.
I think, we've had those discussions in the, in the past week, and I think what you're asking is, do we really want to restrict ourselves that way in, in future properties by taking a grant that may just be five, 10, $20,000?
Yeah, you know, nothing about what we've already done.
Right. So that is something that this group will need to consider strongly the next time we make grant applications, because like you say, this, this could, could be a little bit of a hurdle for you, should you ever choose to do anything different with that park. Now, I think it's kind of a fundamental question, and I don't think you're raising it on this particular park, but I really don't see that we're going to ever move backwards and try and have less parks. I think your question is, what if we decided going across the street because it's not in a floodplain, because it's in a better location, would that be beneficial for us to take in that money? But we will have to maintain this and every other park forevermore, if you will, unless we go through some sort of a conversion process. So like I say, we will certainly remind ourselves of that when we bring another grant application before, just to keep in mind. From my perspective, conceptually anyway, I think, I don't have a problem at all with the school and what they have proposed. I think Nelson Field, that area of Goran Park has been underutilized for many years. We, we don't use those two lower fields for any organized activity. There is some, some pickup games and community activity that takes place here. I've seen my friend, the Hess family here, that I talked to in the last couple of weeks as well, who live in that neighborhood and do in fact utilize that park very often, and have spoken with them at great length in the past few days. And I think that they will tell you that from an organized standpoint, it's underutilized, but from a neighborhood standpoint, there probably is use that goes on there. In my discussions with the school board, let me back up. I think that, that this could be beneficial for us as a community, and certainly beneficial for the school. However, as in most anything, the devil is in the details, and we've just heard tonight about a whole lot of details that would have to be worked through with these federal restrictions. So I guess what we have to decide tonight is basically, we have one of two options, as I see it. We certainly could come up with more, but the first of which is, I guess we could say that we're just not interested. This looks like this is a little bit too much work, or we're not interested in, in proceeding with this, so school board, you all need to, to find you another way to play softball. The second of which, if we decide that we like the concept and decide we want to proceed with this, then the school board, you would need to tell us exactly what it is that you're willing to do. Are you willing to satisfy all of these state and federal restrictions and the hoops that you need to jump, jump through in order to do that? And, and if that's the case, then, then this group can consider making that request. The one other concern that I addressed and heard from the Hesses and others, and I expressed to the school board some time ago, is there is, inside that red circle that you all saw two weeks ago, a basketball court that is used heavily, Eddie will attest to that as well, and then there's also a playground. We have none too many playgrounds in our community. So I've told them, I'm not personally willing to lose a playground and a basketball court. So those things would have to be accommodated in some form or fashion in this proposal, should we decide, should this group decide to proceed. So that being the case, I'll simply ask, what is the, the pleasure of this group?
So basically, we can, I mean, the whole deal of this was to give the school board an option, so we can get these girls a softball field that they call their own. And that's something that is not going to be used, but what they're saying is, we could not give it to them even if we wanted to.
Not unless...
Or they could even buy it from the city even if we wanted.
Now, we even explored the option if we paid some of the grant money back, you know, would that satisfy the National Park Service? And they said, no, the only option is a conversion. We can do a 99-year lease, but when it's not being used, it has to remain open.
And see, it still wouldn't benefit the school board, because they can't spend money on something that ain't on the grounds.
Right.
If I, if I understand this correctly, I mean, yeah.
So when it's not scheduled for practice or game?
My daughters played with a lot of these girls. She's played against a lot of these girls, and I want them to have a softball field somewhere. But that kind of puts us down, puts them in a position, because they can't spend the money.
The outlook for the future for our girls and some facility for them... The outlook for the future for our girls and some facility for them looks to me like that would be best put at the school on some property. And I understand it might be a, some problem with that, I don't know. I've not looked into it. Another thing to remember is that the master plan that we've paid money for from the city funds to get an upgrade for the parks, Goran Park has several listed upgrades on that in the master plan already. So that's something to consider, I think, also. But my personal opinion is, it needs to be put out nicely.
Let me address, or maybe Eddie can address, councilman, some of those. One of the reasons that I think that this is appealing from a community standpoint is, on that master plan, there, there really is no allowance for any monies to be spent on Richardson Field, Nelson Field. Those fields will basically remain unchanged. I'm, I feel certain that we will have some restroom upgrades, or new restrooms.
Playgrounds.
Potentially playgrounds.
Does it have picnic shelters down there?
That was torn down a few years ago, got in terrible disrepair. So there may be some things like that. My point in all of this is, I think the school board's intent, the school boards, I don't know if it's their intent, but they will spend a significant amount of money to upgrade those two ballparks, to have ballparks that satisfy their desires for quality ballfields. I don't think that the master plan is going to suggest that the city spend that amount of money on those ballfields. I just don't think that's going to be there. I think it will say...
It was more on a quality-of-life type things, playgrounds, restrooms, walking trails, those type of things.
Right. And Eddie, wasn't it my understanding that, that that might be, as they do in the school boards, that might now be a 1A project? That would maybe be a, there'd be several projects in front before even the quality-of-life thing would kick in.
It, it's going to be up to you all to decide what, what that priority list is, but it's a, it's a now to a 10-year plan, so it'll be up to you guys to decide that.
My discussion was simply to say, I, I think this way there will be a significant investment made in that park that probably would not be made, the level of commitment would not be made by the city. Does that make sense? And then that would allow us to spend our monies in another park, and so you've got two for one, as far as our monies are concerned. That was my thought.
I mean, I agree, I agree with that, that the park would get improved. However, from what they've just said, I don't think that we really have that option, do we? The option to allow them to have the park in any form or fashion, do we, from what they just said?
No, we, we absolutely have the option of, of the conversion that they spoke of. Now, there's plenty of hoops there to jump through, but if, if it is this board's pleasure, this group's pleasure to proceed, then, then the ball is in their court to determine, can we jump through those hoops or not? So... I don't think it's up to us whether they build the field or whether. It's up for us. What I understood at the Parks and Rec was, are we willing to even entertain that, whatever the details of it was? And I'm, I'm certainly engaged, give anything in the city to any of the citizens or schools, because they've reciprocated over the years and give to us with Liberty Street, or whatever it might be. So I think we should be good neighbors. Logistically, whether it works out or not, I have no idea, but I mean...
Well, my point is just to give the school board some options.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
At least I have this way out of the process about it. And I can tell you right now, I brought this up at the rec meeting, get the school board to do upgrades, and they give us money to do upgrades. I can't think of any coach who's going to want that to be open to the public at all the time. So if that's the case, you're telling us this has to stay in the public?
And tie it.
I don't see that happening, no more than I see Jeff Burner letting everybody have play football games on a football field at Fresno High School, and I'm just listening there. That's just not going to happen.
Other questions of Eddie and April?
We've always worked well with the school board. Liberty Street, like you mentioned, they sold that to us for a dollar years ago, even longer than I can remember, and I can remember history. The schools were in the city's name, and then we transferred it to them. So we've always worked very closely together. And when, at the Recreation Department meeting, it was talked about keeping the basketball courts and the tennis courts and the playgrounds, all for city use, plus the one ballfield that's down there near the Highway 90. So if there is a way to do a conversion and save the taxpayers in total of half a million or a million dollars, I would be in favor of that. I don't know if we can use some of the property we already own in other places to be another park, or if we'd have to go buy some property.
You have to purchase it.
Yeah, has to be new property.
Has to be new property. Has to be new property that has not ever been used as outdoor recreation, purchased for the purpose of outdoor recreation.
We couldn't buy the soccer complex, for instance, for, yeah.
So I, I don't see it working, but I'd be willing to try if it, if the school board wanted to try it. I think, as a council member, I would support it.
I think, again, just to reiterate what's been said here, it is not our job or responsibility to tell Glasgow independent school districts where to build their softball field. What I think we all agree on is those girls deserve the best softball field that they can get, and as do all of our children in the community for athletic facilities. So this is a lot of information that's come to light this evening. I don't know how much the school board had information about this before tonight, but I think maybe perhaps the motion to make would be to allow Mayor Doty to continue discussion with the school board on this, to find out if they're interested in looking into this conversion process, and then just come back to us, once you all have had a chance to think about this and talk it over, because the school board may decide this is just not worth the hassle, let's build it at home.
Make a motion?
Yes, that's...
Oh, let me, oh, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion in a second to authorize...
To authorize the mayor just to continue discussions, no formal action with the school board, just to continue discussions with the school board about the options of looking at a conversion process for the property.
I have a motion, so we can have a discussion. That will allow them to determine, do they want to, at their September meeting, do we want to try and jump through these hoops or not?
Right.
Anything, should they decide, yes, we want to try and jump through those hoops, my belief would be that, and help me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, that, that that would still have to come back to this board, this council, for action to proceed with that sale, correct?
Correct, and I, and I would recommend, too, that we not, not commit or even put a shovel to the dirt until you knew from the National Park Service that, that all of those steps had been taken and we've gotten approval.
Right. That, that sale couldn't be approved until that happened.
Right. Any other discussion? Have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, we have the second reading of a zoning ordinance for property on Smith Road.
It appearing that the Smith Family Trust is the owner and applicant, along with FCRE Properties, to request a zoning change for the property at 315 Smith Grove, Smith Road in Glasgow, excuse me, containing 4.05 acres from a B2 and B3 and I1 classification to strictly a B3 classification. The drawing of the proposed zoning change is attached here too as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing was conducted on June 18th by the Planning and Zoning Commission that resulted in the recommendation that the property be rezoned to the B3 classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted by the council and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2, the property located at 315 Smith Grove, Smith Road, I'll get that right shortly, here in Glasgow, that contains 4.05 acres, is rezoned to a B3 classification. All future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Having heard this ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Uh, Councilmember Witcher, and second by Councilmember Harris. It's the second reading, therefore be a roll call voting, would please.
Gantz.
Yes, ma'am.
Neal.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Hammer.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have another second reading of the zoning order for zoning property at 316 Green Acres Drive.
It appearing that Donald Wyatt and Rondell Wyatt are the applicants and owners of property located at 316 Green Acres Drive in Glasgow that contains .43 acres. The current zoning is a B2 and R1 classification. The requested zoning change is a B2 classification. The schematic drawing of the subject property is attached as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing was conducted by the commission on June 18th. The recommendation of the commission is that the property be rezoned to the B2 classification. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission are forwarded to the council, which are hereby adopted and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. The findings and recommendations of the commission are hereby approved in all respects. The property located at 316 Green Acres Drive in Glasgow shall be rezoned to the B2 classification. The property subject to the rezoning attached as Exhibit A. All future development of the property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991, and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Having heard this ordinance read, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Councilmember Norris, in a second.
Second.
Councilmember Gross, any discussion? If you would please call a roll.
Hammer.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Gantz.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have a resolution declaring certain police department property as surplus.
That whereas the Glasgow Police Department possesses certain personal property, which is more particularly described on Exhibit A, whereas the personal property is no longer needed by the department, and the department has sufficient equipment available to meet the needs of the department, whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interests for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the city as follows. Pursuant to KRS 82083, the following written determinations are made. The property to be surplus is the personal property described on Exhibit A. The intended use of this property at the time of its acquisition was for the use and benefit of the police department and its operations. The reason why is it is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is due to the fact that there are other pieces of equipment similar within the department which are capable of meeting all of the needs of the department and continuing to maintain and keep the personal property described herein would be redundant. The method of disposition to be used shall be by public auction or any other means permitted by law. Section 2, this property is hereby declared surplus and shall be disposed of by any permitted means authorized by law, including public auction. Mayor Dick Doty is hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Councilmember Oliver, and second by Councilmember Neal, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Three municipal orders reappointing board and committee members, the first of which is Mr. Benny Dickinson to the Code of Ethics Committee.
On order of the mayor, Benny Dickinson is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Code of Ethics Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, expiring August 31, 2021, subject to the approval of the council.
Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Councilmember Gross, and second?
Second.
Councilmember Norris, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next order is reappointing Michael Rice to the Code of Ethics Committee.
On order of the mayor, Mike Rice is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Code of Ethics Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, expiring August 31, 2021, subject to the approval of the council.
Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, and second?
Second.
Councilmember Neal, any discussion?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Last is the municipal order reappointing Sean Hale to the Code Enforcement Board.
On order of the mayor, Sean Hale is hereby reappointed as a member of the Code Enforcement Board. This appointment is for a three-year term, expiring August 31, 2021, subject to the approval of the council.
Having heard this order read, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Councilmember Neal, and second?
Second.
Councilmember Gross, any discussion?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So all the action items that we have on our agenda tonight, I have a few announcements. The first of which will be, will be a specially called Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, set...